There's definitely been a little bit of a breaking of trust, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so there's been a bit of a break in trust. You know, it never should have gotten to that point. Town, the town staff, the, our town council members, members of the board of supervisors, we should always be someone that y'all can trust to do what's right for our communities, right for our residents, and right for even our visitors who come here. So we're hoping that tonight, we can take a moment to hopefully clear the air a little bit, get on the same page, and move forward together to do what's right for y'all and what's right for the town of Gordonsville. Because ultimately, we are all one community, and we all need to work together. So let's talk real quick about how we got here, right? The process of doing the boundary adjustment has been going back and forth for about 20 years now, probably even before then. You know, 20 years ago, I wouldn't pay too much attention to politics, but I seem to recall a little bit of problems about it. So there's an official process, whether that's a boundary line adjustment, it's a voluntary process, or whether it's an annexation which goes in front of a three-judge panel. Either way, the council has not started that process yet. What the council is trying to do is to get your input about how we can work together for what works best for you and for the community. So I'm sure everybody here has seen this map on Facebook, in your emails, a couple different places. So this map was prepared by the Rapidan Regional Commission for planning purposes, just to start the conversation. It's not an official map, it's not, these are the places that we're going to try to adjust in, this is not the, we're going to try to annex X, Y, Z. This is a starting point for discussion. Now, earlier, my predecessor and the previous county administrator had worked with the board of supervisors and with the previous town council to sort of move forward and get the ball rolling, right? At some point, the board supervisors withdrew their support from voluntary boundary line adjustment process, which is absolutely fine, right? This needs to be collaborative, and if it doesn't work for one side, it doesn't work for us either. I'm saying my prayers about that. And so what we really want to do tonight is to hear what works for you. Because we don't know everybody's individual situation, right? There are people here who may have a senior tax discount, we may have some disabled veterans' tax discounts, we could have emergency services personnel whose personal property taxes are reduced. We don't know your individual situations, but we want to hear from you about how you think it might affect you, right? Because everybody's situation is different. And if we don't have a starting place, if we don't say, you know, for example, if somebody says, "I live on X, Y, Z street," and I think it'd be great for you, well, hey, then maybe we know we need to start talking to people on X, Y, Z street. If you're in a subdivision and you say, "Hey, this does not work for us, this is not what we're interested in," perfect. If you all don't want to do that, we don't want to do it either. Because consent of the governor and what works great for y'all and what works for Gordonsville is what we want to do together collaboratively. Pardon me, I want to go real quick. So tonight, the big goal of council is to hear from all of you, to hear what you have to say, where you fall, whether it's something you want, whether it's something you don't want, either way, council wants to know. Because like I said, at the end of the day, this is y'all's town, y'all's community, you may not be a resident inside the town, but you're still part of the wider Gordonsville community, you're our neighbors, you're our friends, we see you in food lines, we see you in church, we see you in football games, we're all part of the same community, and we want to make sure that we're coming together as a community to help make these decisions. So thank you so much, and here in Melville, I'm going to open it up to citizen comment. Got a couple of just housekeeping rules real quick. We've got a lot of people that want to speak, so we're going to keep to about three minutes per person. Now, if you're like me and you've already done the math, you realize we've got to be out of here at 8:30, and the math doesn't work, right? So if at the end of the meeting, there's still a bunch of people who want to speak, we're going to schedule another one, and you'll get first priority to speak. We're giving first priority to people who are not town residents to speak, right? Because y'all might be the ones affected if there's an adjustment or an annexation, right? Following that, then we'll go down to anybody who is in town who wants to speak. For folks who are on Zoom, if there's time, we're going to let y'all speak, as long as it's not impacting our American Sign Language interpreters. So we asked you to, you know, if you're comfortable, you can come up here, you can stand, you can have a seat, you can stand up at where you're sitting, but try to speak up a little bit so everybody can hear you. Make sure you're dressed as a council as a body, not any individual member, and we'd love to hear from you. So with all that being said, I'm going to turn it over to the mayor, so he can kick off the public comment.
So the reason that we wanted to have this informal conversation is so we can have a conversation back and forth as compared to an official meeting. This map right here, as our town manager pointed out, was put together by a separate entity for planning purposes. About 75% of this area is on town water, sewer, or both, either or both, well, excuse me, I'm sorry, town water, sewer, or both. And in cases like yours, what the Rapidan, Rapidan and Rapidan Regional Commission tried to do is they tried to put an equitable map together that showed what an expansion would look like in certain parameters and things like that. And I tend to agree with you, you're not on town services right now, and 100%, I agree with you. And so I don't know if you have any, I know the rest of the council feels like that, I want to open up to the rest of the council if they want to say anything also, but I want to let you know that there are about 25% of the individuals on this map that aren't on any town services right now, and I think that should absolutely be considered as we go forward in this process. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Frank Dickerson, for speaking. I think we have about 15 people that feel the same way you do from Brown Town, because I've been talking to them. So I don't know whether you want to repeat the same thing that Frank has said tonight, but you have expressed it to me also, that you have no desire to be incorporated into the town of Gordonsville, so we understand completely.
And now, like I said, across the hill, across on the other side of the track, they ain't got no sidewalk, they ain't got nothing, they need something in the sidewalk across the town, probably come down out.
Yes, sir. I 100% agree with you, and if you reach out to any of us, I would love to...
They ain't got no, they all crossed the road, right?
I 100% agree with you.
They had two cars, they passed across the road.
Yes, sir, I 100% agree with you.
Take a van, my son take a van, go up there, he got to use kind of kind of green to take that back. They gonna make sense, and y'all will stand and stand up, oh, stand and make things, you stand up there, they go.
Yes, sir. I understand your concerns, and I've heard, I kind of want to stay on the boundary adjustment piece, but I would love to talk with you about that more and the plans that we have from that, because, you know, myself, vice mayor, everybody on this council understands exactly what you're saying in terms of equitable services across the entire town, even at our own town, and we have started strategizing what a potential plan for that looks like. And I would love to be able to share that with you, if you'd love to have a conversation sometime, or in a separate meeting if everybody wants to hear about it. I just want to stay on topic for the boundary adjustment if we can. So really quickly, thank you so much again, Mr. Dickerson, I appreciate it. Our next individual that we have is Mr. Chuck Ronhold.
He left, he had a fire.
He had a fire call, okay. So we'll try to get him back, if he gets a chance to get back, we'll try to get him bumped up when he gets back. Okay, I've just been told the interpreters that are online are having a little bit trouble hearing because the speaker's up here. If you don't mind when you speak, if you're comfortable coming up in either sitting or standing right here, that will be a great opportunity for them to be able to pick up what you're saying on the microphones. All right, the next person that we have is, I know I'm going to butcher your last name, so I'm going to say Mr. Roy. So please feel free to come forward.
We appreciate, we appreciate you coming to share.
Well, generally, really express, like you said, everybody's feeling here, and I'm the same, I'm outside, and, you know, I like it that way, and just reading some of the information on the flyers. You know, I kind of like the fact, if I want to walk, go on my backyard and sight in a little pistol at, hey, no problem to do that, or if I want to have a yard sale every weekend, I can have a yard sale every weekend, or, you know, I haven't got the chicken and goat party yet, but, but I think the one feeling with a lot of people is, it is a money grab, and I don't mention it in here, but I just think the town is wasted away whatever money they had, bad, either bad projects, bad bids, bad construction companies, I don't know, but it just seems now, you want to throw the net out in deeper water and see when you can get to come in and fix, you know, the problems from the way the money was spent. And, you know, to say the services, oh, the better services, like what? I mean, a grocery store to me is not a great, you know, it's just, it's service fine, but most people probably shop elsewhere anyway. You know, and as far as other things in this town, it seems like unless you sell antiques in the front of the store and hot dogs in the back door, you're not going to get a new business in this town. So I, for one, and I'm against it, so, thank you.
Absolutely, I appreciate it. If I could unload a couple of things just in a response to what you said, so those of you that don't know me, I'm of course the mayor of Gordonsville, but in my full-time job, I'm a CFO for a nonprofit organization. And so I focus a lot on finances, and I can disclose some things to you regarding the finances, because I could see how that conclusion could be a natural conclusion to come to. So the first thing right now is the town has about six months of reserve operating cash on hands in the LGIP, which is a local government investment pool that all localities can contribute to. Those are excess funds that we have that are our reserves. So the town actually, accounting standards require that you have three months on hand to be considered, to be in a healthy financial position. We have six. So the town's actually doing very, very well in terms of what its financial position looks like. In addition to that, if you looked at a chance to look at the, once again, proposed report for planning, nothing about this is finalized or even considered at all right now. When the regional commission did their total calculations, the net adjustment to the town would be about $200,000 in revenue if all areas eventually were to be brought in. That's about 3% of our budget. Our budget runs between 4.5 and $5 million a year. It's inflated right now a little bit because of the park project that we have going on, all the donations must flow through in-town, the grant revenues must flow through in-town, and then they flow right back out. So there's been a lot of conversation about our expense amounts and things like that, about $200,000 to $300,000 of those expenses each month are related directly to the park project. And so the town is in a great financial position. What this is, is this is strategic planning, and that's the whole reason that this council wanted to have this conversation, is planning for the future. We don't want to be like other localities, and I know there's a lot of people in town in this room, and we can talk about this, town of Gordonsville, and I did an analysis, and I would love to talk with anybody about it, but the town of Gordonsville has the cheapest real estate tax rate by four pennies compared to the town of Orange, Louisa, Mineral, and Lorraine. That might sound like not a lot, that might not sound like a lot, but it is a lot when you're looking at your house, that's $250,000, $300,000. In addition, we do have a very high personal property tax rate compared to those same localities, but the idea with that personal property tax rate is that tax rate is charged on a much lower threshold of dollars. And so when you look across all of the areas, each locality likes to pick and choose essentially where they get their revenues from, whether it's meals tax like the town of Orange does or other different areas, when you look collectively at our tax rates, we are in line with those five localities that we looked at as our closest localities to us. So this isn't a money grab by any means, I know it's hard to say that, but I can only tell you that we are in a healthy financial position, and this is only 3% to 4% of our budget. And so it's not a substantial amount to the town, it's more about strategic planning and growing the town the right way. As things get more expensive, like Mr. Dickerson pointed out, that we're all feeling across the town, things are getting more and more and more expensive, so. Would any council members like to say anything else regarding that?
Basically.
Okay. All right, let's go move on in the essence of time. The miss, the next person we have, I believe, is, this is Miss Dorthea Dixon?
Dorita.
Dorita Dixon?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, everybody, I'm Dorita Dixon, and the guy who just spoke is my son Frank. We live in Brown Town, we live on Brown Town Road. On Brown Town Road, we are self-sufficient. We have everything we need down there, we have our own well, my well is 125 feet deep, so we have our own septic tank, we get our lights from the R E A, out of Livingston. So what is it Gordonsville, going to town, Gordonsville really don't have anything to offer us, but, and we do contribute to the fire department, and the rescue squad, I think mostly comes out of Bob's Will or Orange. So what is the town going to give us? And furthermore, you're talking about annexation, so you're going to be taking our money, right, soon, and we'd be getting nothing, and we'd be paying for somebody else, for somebody, for some other people. But I mean, you know, we won't be getting anything, so we'll just pay town taxes. Why are we going to be paying town taxes? First of all, I hate to say this, you, anybody, ride down Brown Town Road and look how it looked down there, and ride around in town of Gordonsville and look how that, so sometimes people say you got to clean around your own back door before you move on back in.
Anybody on council, would anybody like to respond to that on council?
Only one I want to say is, Ms. Dorita Dickerson is 90 years old, so she...
Excellent, thank you so much, Ms. Dorita.
And still driving and doing everything anybody else can do.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Excellent, all right, the next person that we have on the list is Ms. Barbara Drinkwater.
That's me.
Yes, ma'am. If you don't mind, if you're comfortable doing so, thank you.
So I've lived here 47 years, I moved here from up north, and I have probably the farm that's the closest to town. And when I saw the boundaries, I thought, hmm, they want my horses. And I didn't know how far back it was, because the house is half a mile back off Cedar Hill Road, and so I was confused. So my question is, why would you want our farm? And the second thing is, our farm, we wanted to offer for trails to town so people could come and park on our road and walk up the mountain and go all the way to Mount Kilian someday. That's the plan. And so, when nice and close, we have a sidewalk all the way to town, so those are my questions.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Thank you so much for your comments, I think they're very good ones. And so some of the questions, the first question that you answered, why would, why would the town include that in your, in your farm in that? I think that underscores the fact that this is a planning document, and those specific decisions have been made. I'm guessing that's a separate parcel than what, oh, it's all...
It's the beginning of our, it's the entrance to our farm.
Okay.
It's the horse pasture.
So it's essentially cuts across your property?
Yeah.
So if anybody can't hear, it cuts across her horse pasture, so it essentially cuts her property in half. And I think that further highlights the evidence that this is a planning document. You're right, I mean, this...
I was curious.
Yeah, it is an interesting thing, and so that is definitely something that we have right now, actually, on the current town boundaries, that we would look that if this were to proceed past the planning stage, if this were to proceed past the planning stage, we would want to rectify that. Nobody wants half their property in and half their property out, it doesn't make any sense whatsoever, we have situations like that. So yeah, all I can say is, I'm not sure why that's the case, but I can just highlight that it's a planning document, and that's likely the reason why, is it wasn't looked at too deeply as a part of a planning document. In terms of your town of trails, and what I know just personally with you and your husband, and how much y'all have done in town, just thank you so much, and how much y'all have given to town, and other localities, and what you continue to do, y'all are amazing. And I think that answers your question, but if there's anything else, let me know, but I just, once again, it's a planning document, so, yep. All right, the next person that we have is Mr. Earl Rider.
My name is Earl Rider. I don't know how many people may, I might have something in common with, but I was actually born here in the Gordonsville Hospital. I might be the only one here that was born in the Gordonsville Hospital, but here I am.
That's amazing.
But so far, the one question that hasn't been addressed is why?
Why?
Why the annexation? Why, why, why is this at all? My second question is, as far as what constitutes the boundaries, I know one of my neighbors, his property is owned agricultural.
I can't hear him.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to have to yell.
Okay, I'm a hug.
And if you also keep the sidebar conversations to a minimum, that helps everybody out, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, one of my neighbors, he's not included in this annexation, his property is owned agricultural, so I looked on the map, and my property is owned agricultural. So, you know, that's my two main questions, but my biggest question is, why this at all?
Yeah, absolutely. So for those of you, if you hadn't heard, Mr. Rider, his big question is why this is being considered at all right now? And the second question is, you know, he has a property next to him that's zoned the exact same way, and so why was a cutoff line there, if you will, et cetera? So I'll start with your second question, because that's the easier one to answer if you will. Once again, it's a planning document. I appreciate you coming to share that with us, because it wasn't looked at that closely. And this is for discussion, to have those exact concerns brought up, and so I appreciate you bringing that forward. Secondly, why this is being considered at all? I will tell you that I will share my thoughts, but I would also like council to share theirs too, if anybody's comfortable with it. My thoughts are strategic planning for the town. As we have talked about, everything's getting more expensive for everybody. And that plan document that's being just a proposal, just a planned proposal, was put together by an external party a couple of years ago to look at if the town was to expand, what it would look like. My goal of any council that I've been on in the six years of council has always been to keep tax rates low. We understand that our town is on fixed income, they're a blue collar town, and we respect that, and we want to keep those taxes low for the people that are in town. And so part of that analysis has to be, like I said, for the 75% of people that are on one or both services that the town is providing, what does that look like to bring them into town since they're already on town services? It doesn't mean that we're going to do it, it just means that that's the most natural place to look to sustainably grow the town.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
If people are already on town water, and I can understand, you know, possibly an annexation now, but I've got my own well and septic, a whole lot of these people got their own well and septic, why were they even considered in annexation?
I think, I think absolutely a fair point, and I could walk you through each one of those phases, I'm happy to walk anybody through each one of those phases. The ultimate reason they were considered is this was done by an external party, and this external party said to us, this is what makes the most sense. If you're going to equitably look at the areas of town, we know that the county line for Louise is on one point, and there was no appetite to go into there, and so if you're going to equitably look at the substantive places in town, what makes the most sense? To your point about you not being on water and sewer, once again, I hope I don't get in trouble for saying this, but I agree with you. I don't necessarily think you should be in town if you're not on services already. I've told many people in one-on-one conversations that have been on Black Level Road and other roads that have told me the same thing.
That's where I'm at.
That's where you live, I don't want to be in town, and things like that. I think that's a fantastic argument, and I thank you for coming to say that to us, because you are part of the 25% that's not. This is not a final plan, it's not an all or nothing plan. Anthony mentioned it earlier, there are three ways that you can boundary adjust in the town. You can voluntarily do it, you can involuntarily do it, or you can do one-off properties that want to be come on in based on just their property. A decision has not been made past having this meeting. And I think, to your point, to Mr. Dickinson's point, to everybody on Brown Town Road's point, if you're happy that you have your own septic and well and the way you live and things like that right now, it's not our job to come in and ruin that. You're not on town services. It's not our job to come in and ruin that until we have looked at everybody that currently relies on the town for one reason or another. You currently don't rely on the town.
No, no.
And I think it's a fair argument, and I think, I think it's a fair argument, so I'll stop right there in case anybody else, that, I know it was a long answer, but that was my long answer to why we are doing this, because there is a large portion that's not in town. And I can get into the numbers, I can get into the numbers and figure out why, and I'll get into that if anybody wants to, I won't put everybody to sleep here tonight, but I want to open it up to the rest of the council, if they have any thoughts on that, about why they think we should, we should at least even have this discussion, because once again, nobody's decided to move this forward in any sort of way whatsoever. Yeah, sustainable growth for people that are on town services.
That would be the answer, I mean, you didn't say...
Yeah, I said that at the beginning to him. Yeah, I said that at the beginning. Did, did, did everybody hear that I said sustainable growth at the beginning for people that are on services?
But why? Why is the town seeking to grow?
Because things are getting, so her question is, why is the town seeking to grow? This is a philosophy question. To my point, I think every town should have the opportunity to grow sustainably, and should have the opportunity to grow responsibly. And I think first, looking at the constituents that are on town services that aren't a part of everything else that's involved in town, is the way to do that as a first step. I'm sure plenty of people will disagree with me, which is fine, that's why I love that we're having this meeting, but to me, the most responsible way to look at growth, rather than laden town citizens with higher tax rates and more and more and more, is to adjust that tax base of people that are already on services that the town is providing.
So your reason why...
To create more revenue for the town.
We know this is going to create more revenue for the town, 3% to 4%, it's a responsible So we're going to keep this going, if you do want to have it, come up and do that, that's fine, absolutely, if you want to come up and say your piece, that's fine, let me know if you hadn't marched yourself earlier, because I'm happy to do it, if not, we'll have a conversation afterwards if you want to also. So I do want to keep going down the line, though.
Whoever you present?
What's that, I said, if you do want to add your name to the list, if you haven't gotten a, we can't hear when 10 people are yelling at the same time. And so if you do want to have a one-on-one conversation and have a chance for your opinion to be heard, please come up here and do that, and we can add your name to the list, let Anthony know to the side, and we can add your name to the list. We have people online too, about 10 or 12 people online too that are listening also. We want to make sure they can hear everything. So the next person is Mr. Jeff Colvin.
My name is Jeff Colvin, I live at 10092 Gordon Avenue, I also have a small piece of property just off Tavernan Road. I currently have town water, I pay a substantial amount more than the town residents do for that town water. If the annexation were to go through, I wouldn't be able to have a vehicle in my yard or in my driveway that I work on without a current registration, without paying a fee for it. I wouldn't be able to raise a hog to slaughter for my family. As the town code is now, I wouldn't be able to have chickens in my yard. I pay county taxes, I don't want to pay town taxes. If I wanted to live in the town of Gordonsville, I would have bought a house or property in the town.
Just one other thing, if I could, everybody here, show of hands, if you're against the
Completely fair, and once again, that's the whole reason that we're having this planning session. I will say that part of the process, if an official process was to get started, part of that process is to look at the zoning in town and to introduce new zoning codes to grandfather people in that have things like chickens, larger properties, et cetera. I've had multiple conversations with people that have said, if I get brought into town, how does that affect my property and my zoning? Part of that process, if that process was to get started, part of that process is going through that zoning process and adjusting the town code and the town zoning to be reflective of all the properties that are within town.
You got one question. What is the growth that you're looking for? You can have a say in what the growth is, what is the growth that you're looking for?
The growth that we're looking for?
Yeah, like I want to bring, you want to bring a Walmart chain on, what's the growth that you're looking for?
No, no, it's, it's not growth, it's not growth in terms of bringing things to town, although if you have a great connection to an industry that you'd like to bring to town, I have a location in town that we can hook up and get that person connected to... I have a location in town that we can hook up and get that person connected to the industry, because I'd love to fill some of our warehouses that we have. But no, the growth is not growth in bringing businesses or something like that to town, even though that's always a party. The growth is rightsizing the town to include the people that are getting services from the town. That's the growth. So the next person that we have on here is Ms. Tiffany Dove.
My name's Tiffany, and I live on James Madison Highway. I'm sorry, I can't raise my voice.
Okay, so I'll recap her notes for everybody, y'all help me out, Tiffany.
Sorry, I'm just saying.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I understand.
I have an issue with my voice.
No problem.
I raise it higher, but unless I see a snake, it ain't going too much higher. And that being said, when I do see a snake, I shoot him. I'm going to continue to do so. That's the way I've done it since I was three years old.
Yes, ma'am.
And if y'all do these adjustments, how is that going to affect the nine-one-one emergency response? How is that going to affect the water and sewer stuff we have? Is that going to force us to pull an extra thirty thousand dollars out of thin air to connect ourselves to the sewer or to the water? How is that going to affect those of us that it brings no benefit at all to?
Yeah, absolutely.
We, we have a lot of other questions also, but those are a few of them.
Okay, so let's hit those first. So if I could say it for everybody, if, if you want to stay seated, you can, and we can handle the rest of the ones you have. It's, it's really up to you. I think we're doing pretty, pretty good on time so far. So if you want to have more questions, we can answer those. So the first couple of questions that Ms. Dove threw out there were, how does this affect fire and EMS services? The second question that she threw out there was, how does this affect water and sewer hookups and things like that if you don't have those services right now? Correct? Okay, so the first question, in terms of services. So the only town-run service right now that we have in terms of emergency services is the police. So our police department, of course, is, the main response is town. We have mutual aid agreements with Louisa and the county of Orange that notes that if Louisa or the county of Orange need assistance with anything, we have mutual aid understanding agreements with them, that they call us, and then we go out there. That's correct, right, Anthony? They have to call us first to be able to go outside of those. Okay, so I want to make that, because that's what's going to affect if this planned, proposed adjustment goes through, I want, I want to make sure that's one of the services that people understand. Instead of mutual aid, that is the citizen services. Now, we are lucky to have a volunteer fire department, of which Mr. Reinhold was called out to do, that serves the town. The town, you know, provides funding to them every single year, and they're actually a volunteer-run organization. So I would have to check with him to see how that would actually affect those type of services.
Because that's a lot more people to put on your plate.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And we always want to be able to give them more because of the services that they provide. Right now EMS is run by the county. For our town and for the areas around our town, it's run, I believe mostly out of Barbersville, but I believe it could be run out of Orange too, just depending on where units are at. There has been conversation, from my understanding, on the county level, from my understanding with our volunteer fire department, about adding EMS services inside Gordonsville, which would be a huge benefit and going back to like it used to be. But to my understanding is EMS wouldn't be affected at all because it's a county service. And no matter whether EMS is in Gordonsville or outside of Gordonsville, because it's county-run, the county would continue to take care of that. So I hope that helps, kind of like a three-tiered kind of structure. In terms of the water and sewer, really, nobody, and Anthony, please tell me if I'm wrong here.
I will.
Nobody would be required to connect to town water and sewer.
They would not be forced to do so.
They would not be forced to do so.
So it would be a benefit to me?
And, and if you're not on town services right now, you're exactly right. It would. So weren't you Brown Town Road and all those?
I said, watch that for like you.
Yes.
At the emergency fire hatchet and stuff in front of our neighbor's house.
Yes, ma'am.
They let the water leak.
Yeah.
For over a year, then I had to call it in multiple times, so they finally even fixed that. They're going to waste their water, and that's fine, but I don't want to waste mine.
Yes, ma'am. I a hundred percent agree. Now, I do want to caveat by the fact that you're not required to connect, but the town would be required to put together a phased plan to allow you to have the opportunity to make that connection. So if you wanted to, if you said, you know, my wells-
You want to spend an extra twenty, thirty thousand dollars to connect?
You could. And, and it's, and it's the town's, it's the town's responsibility to allow for that connection to happen and allow you that services, but it's no way your responsibility to say, for us to say, you have to have those services.
Just one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
How is that going to affect all the voting districts?
Uh, her question was, how is that going to affect the voting districts? My understanding is, no, actually, I can confidently say this. All the areas that are on the planned, proposed, planning proposal for planning are in District One. So there would be no change in voting districts whatsoever. The only change that would be, would be, right now, all of town citizens are required to go to town hall to vote, and everybody outside of the town, but in a certain area, are required to go to our firehouse to vote. So it might change where you vote, but you would still be voting for the same individuals except town. Anybody that's boundary adjusted into town would actually, i- if that was to go through and that process was to happen, you would have the on-your-town ordinance too, where you would have a right to vote for mayor and the four council members. And so-
Right, and a better trash service, apparently, since you hear so much about it on Facebook.
Right, well, that, I am happy to note that that is corrected, from what I understand. It was quite a debacle about a year ago, you're right. But since we have switched companies, it has been, it has been amazing to have that.
That's good, because I know some of the elderly people out here, they were having a heck of a time just trying to get their trash out.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. It was, it was, it was disappointing. You're exactly right. A hundred percent. She's referencing the trash service issues that if you're a town resident, we had about a year ago or so. You're right, it was a very, very difficult situation, and we're happy to say it looks like that's, I don't believe we've had a single complaint since the new service started. Not that I'm aware of. Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much for your comments.
So, I'm new, and I'm sorry. I have a question to leave that on her question, because I think that it would potentially help y'all. But if you were signing up for new water and sewer through the town, and this went through, would y'all give a discount to the people who are choosing to jump on? Would that be a possibility?
Yeah, so if you couldn't hear her question, what she's asking is, if, if this boundary adjustment was to be considered and then moved to the next stage, would people that are currently outside of town that are on town services for water and sewer get a, a, a discount, if you will?
No, no. New people signing up, like she has a well, her well's not working. If they wanted to make that connection to water and sewer, which you said the town has to offer, instead of the thousands of dollars it is, would you offer a discount to those individuals?
That's a great, that's a great question. So sorry, I misunderstood her question. Her question is, i- if, if this was to go through and, and somebody maybe was having a failing well or a failing septic system and wanted to connect to town services, would we offer a one-time discount for them to be able to connect to those services? Those rates are set by the town based on its appropriation schedule on the water side. I think it's a great idea. I can't say definitely either way, but I think it would be in the realm of possibility as one of the considerations to me.
Then there are grant programs that, that help fund that, so a, a path forward could exist to do that.
Yep.
I think that would help y'all in possibly pushing this forward.
Yep, I appreciate that. All right, the next person we have on the list is Mr. Eric Frobon.
Hi.
Hello, sir. Please do, please do.
Yeah, we moved here about thirty-four years ago, and we live out fifteen, about a mile from the traffic circle.
Okay.
On Cedar Hill Road, like by Mrs. Parter.
Yes, sir.
And then anyhow, we bought nine acres there. We have cows there and chickens. It's angst that is the whole nine acres.
Yes, sir.
The thing that was concerning to me was the proposed line here ran right down the center of our property, which are wells, we have wells and septic, and the septic tank would be in the town, and the grain field is in the county. The, anyhow, we moved, like I said, we moved here thirty-four years ago. We moved here to live in the county in a rural area and not to live in the town.
Yes, sir.
We chose not to live in the town.
Yes, sir.
We lived in a short bump when we first moved here, not interested.
Yes, sir.
That's-
Yes, sir. I appreciate it.
So anyhow, the division of the property line, it's a concern. You know, why does it, you know, split the property line? And the other thing is, our neighbor nearby, I noticed the proposed line went back to fifteen, then went across the line, and then went back up into some housing.
Yeah.
I didn't quite understand what was going on.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I appreciate it. So just to, just, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Just to recap for everybody, so what Mr. Frobon was saying was, he lives out, you know, near that area, down fifteen, about a mile down fifteen, and he has a nine-acre farm. His farm right now, once again, like somebody else over here that we talked about earlier, Ms. Drinkwater, the line runs right through the farm. All I can say to that is, once again, it's a planning document, and that's evidence of the fact that it is a planning document and shows that. I think also you noted that you're on your own well and septic, which, as I've stated before, I think is a great case to maybe not expand that far down fifteen. I can only speak for myself, as I was on council that point, when this document was presented to us, and I can tell you that the regional commission provided this option down to the town-owned airport and public works building right there, but the consensus of the council at that point, and I hope I don't, Vice Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, she was on council also, the consensus with council at that point was, this is a planning document. We've talked about this for two decades. Let's get something on paper for consideration, and then have these meetings where things get adjusted and scaled back, and we hear from, you know, residents inside and outside of the town and everything. So, great points. Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, Ron, can I ask you a question? If this document is, and I'm, I'm just quoting, I apologize, but if this document is not that great, drawn out the way it is, the lines cut here, I guess it's a two-part question, but how much did this not-so-great document cost the town to add? Secondly, oh, we can go back and we can reshape, and we can recut, and we can retool it, how much are you going to charge them every time they keep doing this till?
Yeah.
Or are we going to have to hire?
I'm sure it's not, I'm sure it's not cheap.
Yeah, no.
And it's a company that has no tie around here, so you say, so why are local people doing it?
So a, a quick question. It is a local organization, so the Rapid Hand and Rapid Hand Regional Commission is a local organization. They're actually a low-cost option for us. We could hire, they're actually, right now, they're actually looking at water amounts across, as the regional water planning and things like that. So they do have, absolutely represent our area. In fact, I, as mayor, sit on the regional commission. I didn't then, but I do now, as representative of Gordonsville, along with other representatives of Orange and other localities in the Rapid Hand, Rapid Hand district. So it is a low, they do have a planning option, and it is a low-cost option compared to going out to hire a separate contractor, to your point, that would have nothing, no knowledge of this area, no knowledge of the history of this area, and things like that. You're asking me to dig back in the memory banks, since this was a couple of years ago? I believe it was four or five thousand dollars that we paid. Don't hold me to that, I can get that. Janet, do you remember what we paid to the regional commission?
I do not know specifically. I'm happy to look that up.
Three thousand max is what you think? It seems about right. So it's definitely not nothing, but it's a lot cheaper than what we could have done, and we had to have a starting point, because at that point, what was, and, and still to this point, but we're not even to that point yet on this point, so if that makes any sense at all. Once again, this is a planning document. The town was only interested, at the council at that time, and this council too, in a voluntary option. And so we had to have something to present to the county to get their thoughts. And so we didn't sink a bunch of money into really detailed reports and things like that until we got feedback from the county on what their thoughts were to even see if it was a potential option. And that feedback that we got from them that happened earlier this year, that led to all of this, that feedback that we got from them and the, and the agreement, the proposed agreement, and the settlement of the proposed agreement, which keyed off the public information sessions, this, at that point, that's why we didn't sink a lot of money into the reports. The idea, if it would have kept on going, which it's not even been decided yet, the only thing that's been decided is this meeting. I, I know I sound like a broken record, but trust me, I really want to clarify that. That would be the next stage of the process. It would be hearing from public, revising that map to be more certain, providing all types of additional information and things like that. That point isn't even in the process right now. This was just to even, that, that report was generated by a previous council to submit to the county to understand the appetite even for the potential of this. So it's a great question. So to keep up with time, we want to keep going with our list. So the last person that I have in county, so not in town, is Mr. Cody Goodwin. I'm going to invite him up.
I signed up.
Yeah, I don't think you have a full list.
Yeah, you definitely do.
Oh, I got a few, sorry, I looked at the last page. I had two people left on this last list, I'm sorry about that. I did flip my page. I do have two people left after Cody.
I was on top of the list. I was the first person to sign up, actually, to make.
So we don't have a check mark it. So what I will do, I want to make sure everybody has a chance to speak. After we hear from Mr. Goodwin, I will go directly to you, because he's the last person that we have check mark. And anybody else that's in county, we want to make sure we hear from you first. So anybody else, even if you didn't sign up originally and you want to just say something now, please feel free to do so. Raise your hand so we can, yeah, so we can make sure we get the information. Please feel free to do so.
All right, cool.
Mr. Goodwin.
Couple of questions. So there was a statistic you gave when we first started this, talking about that map, and what did you say, seventy, seventy-something percent?
So-
Relay that again?
So about fifty percent of this planning-proposed area is on both services, according to their addresses on the proposed list, and, and you can see it highlighted, you can see it actually highlighted on there in slants. Another twenty-five percent is on either or, water or sewer, not on both, either or. And the remaining twenty-five percent is on no services whatsoever.
Okay, is that, I mean, we just, I don't know, we tend to not agree with that. Are you sure that number's right? Because I mean, it's a, I mean, it's an expansive amount, maybe it doesn't, is that just, just residences? Like some of the properties are just parcels and not a residence right now?
It is based on tax background, it is, yeah. I think what's part of what's confusing people when I give those numbers compared to the actual looking at the land of it, is we have two neighborhoods in there. So those neighborhoods have high-density locations, and so there's forty-something homes in one neighborhood, thirty-something homes in another neighborhood, and so-
Excuse the numbers, is from a land mass standpoint?
Well, I don't think it's- From a land mass. If you're looking at it from a land mass, yes. This, those numbers are based truly on people that would be affected that own those parcels. It's not based on acreage, land mass, anything like that.
Okay, all right. So then we're talking about growth, sustainable growth. How much has the council and members here looked into what you can do to grow within your own town? I mean, you mentioned there a little while ago, you've got an empty warehouse up there, there's some other businesses that used to build. A lot of vacant lots that are within town limits already. I mean, you know, is that, we kind of feel like as county people, that actually the top priority is the town, is that utilize existing, which you already have, apparently.
I think you, you are a hundred percent right, and we're always looking for those opportunities. We have one apartment complex that's going to be renovated with some of the historic buildings on Main Street with new buildings built. That project just went through final paperwork in town. It's going to be about thirty-seven units, I believe. And so those units would expand the town also greatly in a rent, in a society where affordable rentals are needed, and we have been assured that those rentals will be affordable. So that's one of the areas that we're growing. In addition, another area that we're growing is, there is quite a bit of development going on in town, and we're working with each one of those developers to make sure that the main character and things like that is happening in town. But to your point, Anthony, correct me if I'm wrong, north of ninety-five percent of the land in town is developed.
A, a large, a large portion of the land in town is developed.
But how much of that are you collecting revenue on, though? I guess, we understand that it's already developed, like we see the buildings, but when they're vacant, there's no money.
Yeah, no, it's a fair, it's a fair point. And so I think one of the things that we are looking at is, we are looking at our tax relief percentages that we look at every single year. We have reached out, there's quite a few LLCs that actually own buildings in town. And one of the things that we've worked with, and those are private residences too, one of the things that our Board of Architectural Review has started doing in the historic district, which we're now expanding into the rest of the district, is taking care and renovating those properties. So we talked about, you know, on the east side of town, I think it was, Mr. Dickerson mentioned earlier, on the east side of town, you know, taking care of that side of town. Vice Mayor, no, we're working on that. Other people know we're working on that. Vice Mayor's been a huge voice in that, that we need to look at the properties and residences and things over there and hold people to the same standard that we're holding to the rest of town. We are working on that. So that is one of the things that we're doing. Another piece is- Another piece is Anthony has an amazing economic development background. And so we are looking at the properties that we have right now. I'll pass it to you cause it looks like you wanna say something.
Yeah, so, so I'm regularly talking with Julie Harry at the county for her economic development expertise, as well as the county's economic development authority, to see what we can do to bring new businesses, to revitalize existing businesses. We're here to try to help. It just takes some time.
Okay, and last question, I'll let these other people go. But so, you know, I run my own small business. We have a farm outside of town and I have a parcel that's part of the boundary adjustment as well. But anyways, so we talked, we talked about there is an economic analysis and two hundred thousand dollars was what the annual, you know, net revenue was gonna, if we did all these things and all this stuff, whatever, and it's not, seems like it's hardly worth y'all's time, I would state, but anyways, um, based on what you're saying your budget is, but are those, again, like I'm just gonna say, you know, if this thing's been planned for twenty-something years, I mean, I don't know, are they sure about that? Cause I mean, it's my understanding that if we took all these parcels on right now, I don't know that your sewer system, the way it is currently, can keep up with it. We need serious money and expansion of what the sewer would be and, you know, I know that the, uh, town work staff, like, seems like they've got plenty to do. I mean, they're up here on the weekends doing hookups for all these places that you're talking about that are getting developed just outside of town. So they can't even accomplish that during the normal work week. Like, you're gonna take on more staff when it comes to the public works department? I just, I question whether it's even a net benefit to y'all with the, the, I mean, it seems like it'd be a tremendous cost if you're actually gonna provide the services, so you're gonna provide on all the landmass that's out there. There's no sewer on the, up there going up fifteen as far as where y'all wanna go. Um, and so anyways, I would just, I would say if you're gonna proceed with anything, you need to really revisit the numbers would be my, you know, as a small business owner. Expansion too rapidly can be the death of you.
Absolutely.
And all you guys are is a small business.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I, and I think to your point, two hundred thousand is the net. The gross is about three hundred thousand. And that's because when this economic analysis was done, there was about a hundred thousand dollars more in costs that the town was going to have to absorb immediately. And my understanding with this is what you're talking about in terms of infrastructure with water and sewer and things like that, it would be a phased approach, which would require the town to put a plan together. It wouldn't have to be done all at once, but we're required within a certain timeframe to make those services available to all town residents. I still would a hundred percent agree with you. I know exactly what you're saying. But I just wanted to give those caveats to, um, some of the things that you were talking about.
All right, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Very interesting.
Yes, ma'am.
I've been here for fifty years, Barbara Little. I've been here for fifty years come this December, living here. We bought the property before that, to live in the country. We've got, um, the better part of about sixteen acres in woodland with about two and a half acres yard. We're back off the road. Uh, there are three houses. Now even a phased sort of development going up our way would never pay for itself unless we shelled out the money. And we don't have it. I mean, you know, the people there don't have it to start with. And I wanna understand this phase, is, is it, you know, I'm not gonna live forever. Probably wouldn't want to anyway. But when we are talking phase, are we talking, you know, three, five, ten, fifteen, twenty years?
Yeah. So if I'm gonna be, so if everybody heard her, we're talking about this phased approach, how long are we talking? She lives in an area where it'd be substantially, you know, expensive to go up the side. If you notice I'm just on the edge of town, if you're going out towards the town of Orange on the left-hand side, there's quite a change in altitude that happens right there as you go up. And that's, that's where Ms. Little lives. And so I've always been told it's okay to say this, so I'm gonna say it. I don't know. I really don't know. We, once again, it's a planning document, so we didn't get to that point. I don't know, I, I assume that there would be some sort of requirements, whether it's five years, ten years, or something like that, that we would have to provide services and have services available to everybody because it would be invested by the town. But what that is, I don't know. I did check your name, so I'm happy to email you and get you that information, but I don't know.
Well, you see, because this, this really is important to all of the people here.
Absolutely.
Uh, the second phase, because really, to be quite frank, if I paid sewage for the rest of my life and the rest of the next generation or two that live there, you'd never recoup the cost.
Yeah.
I can guarantee you that. Cause I know what it would take to get there. I saw the fire company spend two and a half weeks putting a line this big underground. But, uh, grandfathering bothers me too.
Yeah.
Okay, so you grandfather me in.
Okay.
What happens when I'm dead? Does the grandfather still last? Does it go to the next person in the deed? Uh, do you all decide two years down the road that you're going to reject the grandfather?
It's a great question. Once again, I could say I don't know. My assumption would be it would follow the property. So my assumption is it would follow your property, not necessarily the person.
But can you renege on it?
But I can't a hundred percent say that to be true. And so I will look at that too. That's my feeling based on my knowledge of other areas of this. But because we're in such early stages, I had not looked deep into that. I think it's a great question and I will look at that and get back with you on that.
So it's two phases.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a part of the property and can you renege?
Yep.
And my guess is you can. I've never seen one yet. So, um, but I guess a part of this too is that, and since I understand most, I really haven't kept up with town council, um, I live in the country, um, that most of you are in, so maybe don't have the background, but it looks to me like we are really getting the cart for the horse here. You know, we're coming here for information and most of what we're getting is, we don't know. Now, I appreciate you being honest. I really do. But I'm gonna go home and I'm still not running up.
Yeah. I, I, I think to your points, there, there are a question, a couple, I don't know. I think we've been able to answer what it would potentially look like for other ones, but once again, we're in the planning stages. And, and this is just to understand the appetite if there is a reason for us to invest significant time and money, um, of the town and town staff and things like that and continuing to go forward with this process. And we wanted to hear from you all about what that is very early on in the planning stages.
I have, I have one more.
Yes, ma'am.
Because the, I think that the second amendment spoke, talking about sidewalks.
Yes.
You know how much it would cost to put sidewalks on the way?
I know. Uh, yes, you are absolutely correct. I don't have a sidewalk in front of my house because of that exact same reason. So, absolutely.
And you're not a party?
No. So it's, it's one of the things. And, and we have certain areas of our town that don't want sidewalks, to be completely honest. They don't wanna lose, you know, their, their yard and stuff like that. So anywhere we look to put a new sidewalk, very similar to this in town, we work with the property owners in that area to understand even if they want something like that.
Cause they usually have to pay a portion of the sidewalk cost.
I don't, I have to look that. I don't know if we.
Well, it's, it's typical of most families.
Indirectly through taxes, absolutely. So, all right. That is the listing that I have for in county. I would like to open up other, any in county. Yes, ma'am. I wanna make sure we hit everybody in county first, please.
My neighbor wants to sign up for town and sewer. I don't want to. Does that make me part of a town as well?
In order, which, which area do you live in, ma'am?
Brown Town.
Yeah. So Brown Town, there is no infrastructure out that way. And so right now, the only way that we would have infrastructure for water and sewer run that way, there's no infrastructure that exists out there. Some of these other areas, infrastructure exists at their property lines just because we run it other places and things like that. Because there are no infrastructure that exists out there, um, that would, to my knowledge, the town wouldn't do that, um, unless that, that area, a boundary adjustment did happen and that area was brought in.
So are you trying to tell me that Brown Town is not gonna be affected by this map ever being?
No, I'm not telling you that. I'm telling you based on your specific question of my neighbor wants it and I don't want it, does that mean I'm in town? I'm telling you that we wouldn't offer any type of services like that unless Brown Town was brought in.
So Brown Town is not brought in right now?
No, no, ma'am. No, 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 ma'am. That, once again, this is all planning. Brown Town, none of the areas that are highlighted up here on the planning document have even been close to being decided on whether it's going in or out or anything like that because this council wanted to have this meeting first to see how the constituents felt. No, we, we haven't even, yeah, we haven't done any of that at all whatsoever.
Okay, another question on the draft.
Yes, ma'am.
We have our own way of septic.
Yes.
How are you gonna hook up, if it comes to that part? How are you gonna hook us up to the town that we have paid for our own way of septic? How's that gonna work?
So we wouldn't make you hook up at all. We, it would be our responsibility if, so let's, let's play a game and say Brown Town was to come in. We would be required to put a phased plan to run services to you, but you would not be required to hook up to those services. Yeah.
So if I had to be part of the town, I wouldn't be no part of the town and I wouldn't have to pay no taxes.
Well, yes, you, you still would if your area was brought in. Yes. Yeah. So whether, whether you connect to the water or not, if that proposal was to go through, that, that planning proposal was to go through, whether you're connected to water or sewer or not, you would still be within the town. Yeah. You would just have the option about whether you wanted to connect to water and sewer or not. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Karen and I live right down there from that building that spoke earlier.
Yes.
I do get water.
Yes.
I have our own sewer and we have chickens.
Yes.
And I have big dogs that like to bark and scream all night long.
Yes, ma'am.
Also chickens. And we like to shoot guns in our backyard as target practice and, you know, we train our kids how to go hunting and everything.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the only benefit I see here for my family is that I'm gonna end up paying more taxes. That is going to benefit my family. I pay water.
Yeah.
I pay a lot for that water.
Yes, ma'am.
So there, I don't want it and I shop at Moonlight and I go to Walmart. I go to all of these. Just because I live out there, I didn't wanna be here. I've lived there for fifteen years. My husband worked for the county in Orange as a firefighter and retired a few years ago.
Yes, ma'am.
We moved there for a return. I lived in the city of Wainsworth. I paid high taxes. I'm a newbie. I already paid taxes, high enough. I can't afford to pay you guys and the county. I can't afford to. And I literally live two houses away from the Leva County line that literally jumps five seconds away into Alamo.
Yes, ma'am.
This is not benefiting the, or my side.
Um, if you're gonna speak, please come up. Let's, let's focus on the individuals that haven't gotten a chance to speak yet, right here. Well, can you come up, please, so we can hear? So the interpreter can hear you and also the station name if you're comfortable doing so, please.
My name's Suzie Kruger. Um, I think you've explained it and everything very well and I appreciate that. My question goes back to the original, um, information you shared where there's several options. You can do this if people volunteer. You can do this if people are okay with it or you agree. Um, or you can annex. And I'm wondering if, you know, it doesn't sound like many folks here wanna be part of this town if they live in the county. Um, I'm wondering what is your, um, what is the word I want? Um, how motivated are you to annex folks who don't wanna be in town? That, I think that's what I'm trying to say.
That's a fair, it's a fair question. And so anybody smack me if you feel differently, but I think I can say on behalf of everybody here, there's not a motivation to annex. We, we don't want people that don't wanna be in town, in town. Like, we wanna hear a representative feedback from everybody about what you want and what you don't want. If this isn't the right time because people are, the majority of people are telling us we don't want this, there's nothing to say that we have to annex or we have to do anything. There's three options for a reason. But there's also nothing to say that we can't maybe talk to a couple of property owners that have spoke with us that are on the edge of town that want to be boundary adjusted in and do one property at a time and go that way on a voluntary basis. I don't think, looking at everybody, I don't think anybody has the appetite, contrary to popular belief, to annex anything.
I think that's probably the biggest fear is you all are just gonna say, well, you're not part of the town, whether you like it or not.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Yeah, no.
You heard it here first.
I will tell you, if there was an appetite to annex, we would not have had this meeting tonight. Yes. Um, yes, I don't believe either of y'all has spoken, so yes.
I, I might've missed it. It's a little noisy.
No, no problem. No problem.
And I live, I have, um, own property just outside of town.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm into details. So if it does get annexed, what will the cost be to me to hook up to that? And what I'd be required to run the infrastructure?
Yeah.
So I'm all about cost.
Yeah. Um, so I, once again, I, I appreciate what you're saying. I actually had not thought, um, about what Ms. Loomin said earlier until now. I think that if, it, so we're playing ifs, just to make it clear for everybody, we're playing ifs. If this was to go through, I think the town would like nothing better than to work with extreme discounts for people to run the infrastructure to connect your home, property, et cetera, to town water and sewer. I think that we would make a waiver. I, I, I don't know what that would be, but I think there would an appetite to make that waiver to allow people to connect to the necessary infrastructure they would like to connect to. Now, in terms of actually getting that infrastructure to your property line, that's a hundred percent on town. Yes, it's indirectly through our revenue generating items, of which one is taxes, of course. Um, which is actually our smallest revenue generating portable in the entire town. Um, but that would be on the town side to actually do that planning, to actually get the infrastructure to you.
Because being available and the cost of the homeowner are totally different.
Totally different things, which is why, which is why, you know, when you have individuals come out on town and water and things like that, it's very important where the break is. Is it, you hear, is it on the owner's side or is it on the other side? And the reason why is because there is that need to hook up to it because that infrastructure is your infrastructure, um, in town and things like that. So I would like to think that if this went through in any sort of, um, measure or anything like that, that there would be substantial discounts or waivers or things like that to be able to do that to hook people up to the necessary infrastructure they would want. Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
Yes.
My name's Dana Clark and I live outside off of the highway.
Yep.
And I have a farm with livestock and it's registered as in-use agricultural as farm. And like everybody else here, I am completely against the annexation. My concern is if you've talked that this is preliminary, how come you've already filed with the county to go forward with this and had to be turned down? That is not a voluntary plan. You've never notified the residents. If you go to the county code, you should have notified by certified mail every resident that was considered on that map. You keep saying that the map is old. Why don't you pay that little extra money and clean it up first? So now I'm worried that I have to go check the core documents in Orange that you're trying to file again. And I guarantee you there will be a petition against it.
Okay.
So do you have enough money to be going into litigation for this?
So in the spirit of correct information, we can't say that you spent too much money on putting a plan together, but you should've spent more money on putting a plan together. Cause that's kind of what I'm hearing.
That's gonna be chunk change compared if you go forward and fight litigation.
Plan. Now what we did in our collaboration with the county, the town's collaboration with the county, was we talked with them every single step of the way with the supervisor, the county administrator, and the town's legal team. What is the point of a boundary adjustment if the two main parties that have to settle don't agree on something?
No, you have to have a vote by over fifty-one percent.
You're not listening to me. What is the point in going forward with something? What is the point in going forward to all of the public hearing steps and everything that you have to do if the two parties don't agree on something in a draft form?
So had you had a vote with over fifty-one percent, the county would've agreed. But you don't have that here.
Okay. So the bottom line is we didn't even get to that point because all we wanted to do was get aligned with what the county and what the town agreed upon in terms of an area so we can even reach out to those individuals in the area. There's been a lot of misinformation. There's been a lot of misinformation shared online that we're so far along in this process. That's all misinformation. We are not far along in this process. This is the only thing that this council has agreed upon, which is having this meeting. Everything that you're talking about has happened back dating to the beginning of last year and through the first couple of months of this year.
So when you sent out by social media, which I'm sorry, is not a public dissemination of information, no, it's not agreed, it, the courts will say no.
Well, you're right, it's not a public dissemination of information, but our work session that we had posted online in May of twenty twenty-four was, and nobody paid attention to that, so I shared on social media to reach a wider audience.
So there were people paying attention and you going to the court started that dialogue.
We haven't gone to the court at all.
You went and you had a notification saying that they will not be backing you.
Well, we didn't go to the court at all. What court?
You went to the county planner group.
We went to the county attorney because the county attorney wanted to review a draft agreement for settlement before we moved into this process per the county's direction.
My concern is you're not following county code. Nobody's been identified and notified officially.
Because it's not official.
My concern is you don't really have enough money to put in infrastructure to capitalize all that property and acreage in order to provide anything.
Okay.
If you took ten years and you can't even update a map, how are you going to put? You said that this was a decade old?
No, I did not.
You did, multiple times.
I said the county, I said the conversation of a boundary adjustment is two decades old. This map was created and presented to council in two thousand twenty-four by the Rapid and Regional Commission. The meeting I just mentioned, that's online.
Okay. My concern is that you didn't bother to update this and now you're going to promise an undisclosed period of time that you might be doing infrastructure upgrades.
I'm not promising anything because this isn't a done deal. It's nowhere close, this is a planning meeting. This is to hear concerns from everybody about whether they are for this potential process or not. Have foundational groundwork to lay to even get to this point to discuss with the county attorney and the county to see if they were even open to this? Yeah, that's a voluntary process. You should do your homework to see if the county is even open to it. The county agreed to it, now the county doesn't agree to it. That's fine. That's fine.
I think that's an interpretation of the code. That, that's not how I would've read it, but-
This is not, we are not in a boundary adjustment process. We haven't even started a process. This is planning. See, this is the problem is that so much has been spread about we're so far along in this process and things like that. We're not. We're telling you, you can look back through all of our notes. The only thing that this council has agreed upon is to have this meeting. Look back through our minutes.
Well, I hope that you can take some of the flavor then, obviously.
I absolutely will. I appreciate you and everybody else coming out to share your thoughts tonight. Absolutely.
My name is Dick Duke. I got a son named Ramon. He's all known. But he's in East River.
Kyle.
Kyle Street.
Yes.
And Ramon.
Yes, sir.
He's got the sidewalk, the road is narrow like that. And y'all talking about spam. Why don't y'all go cross the hill and do some Ramon, that's good, go down the road. You know, make sense, y'all always finding that hole, where, now, he go cross the hill, cross that railroad track.
Yes, sir.
All the people living, putting new houses and stuff out and the way they put their new houses in it ain't right. They got one house that built it up, they built a road from the ground up that high and ran a sub to take into the, to the city.
Go ahead, that's right, that's right.
I see that.
Yes, sir.
I know because I see it. You go, you do, go.
You said Pop, you said Pop Street, right?
Right on Pop. Nine Kyle Street, the next street up from-
The next street, I forgot.
The main, from, from the brown.
E Street?
Uh, six forty-three.
Six forty-three, okay.
A trail, put a random trail or something for that and took it from the ground and build the gravel up that high and ran a sub to take into the height. Set right there. And y'all talking about spam, y'all need to go cross that hill, the railroad track.
Yeah.
Cross by the black neighborhood and do some work around that for y'all spamming down in Brown Town. I live in Brown Town.
A hundred percent agree with you, sir. Absolutely.
And you got thing going pretty quick down in Brown Town.
Yeah. And, and I will say we do, um, work with the county building official on that. I'll make sure that we look into that, figure out-
The road, the road.
E Street.
Yeah, Ramon, you can't take too calm, can't take-
But you're exactly right. The, the standards, the standards, uh, the standards of services across the portions of the town should be in all parts of the town. You're exactly right. A hundred percent agree with you. Yes, sir. Is there any? I just wanna confirm you're outside of town, correct?
I'm speaking on behalf of them who are outside of town, that's my parents.
Okay.
So I'm here to express my concern with- My name's Jill. This is Calvin and Sylvia Hill, they're in the annexation.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here to express my concern with the process that town council has chosen to follow regarding this boundary adjustment. It is both misguided and deeply flawed. We have heard time and time again from the mayor and council that they want to foster transparency and build trust with the community. With that in mind, I wanna highlight some critical omissions from your brochure that you all published on the website on September eleventh. Omissions that contradict that very princ- those very principles. First, your timeline outlines interactions with the county administrator, the county attorney, and the board of supervisors. It makes no mention of a key document, which is this letter from the county withdrawing its support. Why was that not included? You all had it. Why did you not include it?
Am I good with sharing that? Yeah. We were, at our, at that time, when it was requested, we were advised by, so, I'm gonna clarify this because I think as soon as I say legal, everybody's gonna flip out. But no matter what process that you go through, a boundary adjustment, voluntary, involuntary, or one-off property, you have to have legal representation. It has to go through the courts. It has to go through the courts no matter what. At that time, we had talked with our legal team and told them that we were still focused on a voluntary adjustment and we were having this meeting. We had received this letter. What did they recommend? They recommended because of the fact that the town had not decided officially what path we were going through, because there are paths where we don't have to have supervisor support. But because we haven't officially decided what path we were going to take, even though I'm telling you, everybody wants the voluntary, but because we hadn't officially voted on that, our legal team recommended that we do not release that letter.
So if the county withdraws their support and does not support this, how many paths do you have?
So the county has withdrawn their support under the, if you look at that letter in the second to last paragraph in the current iteration and welcomes the town to come back with a different iteration of that. So we still are looking forward to hopefully collaboratively working with the county towards this and potentially in the future. Once again, haven't made a decision either way. Based on the opposition that we've heard tonight, council might decide, it's just not worth it, let's go the one-off process.
But should you get that iteration in place before you do all of this and get everybody all in enough?
This is a planning meeting just for feedback. I have a understanding that the people that are the most upset are because they haven't heard this from us, which is our fault. We should've shared this earlier. But there's been a lot of-
You talked about your town council thing in the work session. These people are not in town. Why do they care about your work session? They're not proud of you.
I am, I absolutely understand that. And that's why we didn't hold this at the work session, that's why we're holding this as a planning meeting.
You just made the comment to Ms. Clark that people didn't come to your work session when you all discussed that. Why would they? They're not involved.
That's, I mean, that's a good point.
You didn't notify people.
Well, because the process has not started. The process has not started.
Okay, let me keep going. Secondly, your brochure claims that there's no official address list for the properties impacted. Yet you posted a map on social media and the town is holding this information session. How can you hold a public outreach session such as this public promo, with the public promotional materials without first identifying and notifying the very residents who will be affected? This is not just poor planning, it's a failure of transparency and due process. Now let's get to the claim made in your brochure regarding taxes. That it's quote, impossible to know, unquote, whether the adjustment will result in a net increase or decrease in taxes. Let's all be honest here. Residents in the proposed adjustment area do not currently pay town taxes. This adjustment would impose an entirely new layer of taxation to suggest otherwise is misleading. This is not a tax shuffle, it's a tax increase, plain and simple. While we're discussing taxes, let's not forget a comment that was made to a citizen on social media on July twenty-fifth that the town has not raised its taxes in five years when the town had just voted in May to approve its FY twenty-five, twenty-six budget, raising the personal property tax rate from seventy-two cents to ninety-nine cents per one hundred assessed value, which was a thirty-seven and a half percent increase. Is that your definition of transparency and how you build trust?
Yeah. I'm happy you brought that up because I wanna say in front- I'm happy you brought that up because I wanna say in front of everybody, I apologize for that. I apologize for that. It was in-
With all due respect, that was a lot.
No, no, it wasn't. Because the way I was looking at it was it was removal of a tax relief, but in the same vein, that is a tax increase. And so I understand it and so I would like to apologize for that.
So, right here, in the proposal that came before you, it is presented as a tax increase in your board packet.
I understand that.
Proposed increase.
I understand that.
Doesn't say, going back to what it used to be, doesn't say any of that.
I'm not arguing with you at all. I hundred percent that, I hundred percent understand that.
Okay.
Yep. Like I said, I apologize for that, that was a mistake on my part.
You also cite a need for services like water, sewer, waste collection, crime prevention, and zoning. So I'd like to point out some facts. Water and sewer, most of these homes and businesses already have established services. For those that may want to connect, those services aren't simple or cheap. According to your FY twenty-five, twenty-six appropriation schedule, the connection fees alone range from five thousand to forty-eight thousand dollars for water and seventy-five hundred to seventy-two thousand for sewer plus the actual cost of installation. That is a massive cost burden. My parents live on fifteen. They get their water from RSA. If they're hooked up to the town, their water bill's gonna go up because your connection is at fifteen and thirty-three and they're gonna pay in-town water taxes, not directly to RSA. They're gonna pay more taxes.
Well, in-
They've lived there for fifty-eight years. If they wanted to be in town, they would've built in town. They built their house there and they could've kept it there. Waste collection. Many already use private services or county collection sites for free and they are content to continue doing so without incurring extra taxes, taxes and town regulations. Crime prevention. I spent over twenty-three years working in a multi-jurisdictional nine-one-one center. Mutual aid agreements already ensure that the closest available responder handles emergencies regardless of municipal lines. A boundary adjustment will not improve this. It's already working. Your board packet on the boundary adjustment indicates no new public safety staff will be added. Yet you just had a truck that was broke down, impeding traffic less than a month ago and the one officer you had on duty was tied up and couldn't respond. Is that the level of service that you're gonna provide these residents? So, being annexed into the town brings an additional layer of zoning regulations and it fees and restrictions because these residents will be bound by county and town regulations. Again, more cost, more control, and less freedom. And I'm gonna do what Jeff did and ask everybody that was affected by this to stand up and continue to stand if there are powers not to be. This is your transparency and the full truth. Not this brochure that you all put out and the way you fought about this proposal, which is government overreach deceptive at best and people are tired of it.
So we have Annette Clark. Um, she also wants to have a, uh, comment through her interpreters.
Hello, everyone. My name is Annette. Annette Clark. And I live in Black Level Road on Coxel Road. And I've been living there for sixteen now. I'm a deaf woman and I'm just one you all are knowing about my death situation, living in the country for sixteen years. Many people are not aware. Late summer, my neighbor actually told me something that was really shocking. I wasn't informed by email, I didn't receive a letter, there was nothing in my post office. So why is this changed now? As you know, as a deaf woman, I should know this information just like right here at Conner Parcs. There was this one woman in the back that said something along with, um, why these things are being told now. Like, for example, when we're talking about social security disability, like I do have low water. Why are we changing this? What are you going to do? Are you gonna charge me for water now? I mean, what can you do to help me, especially as a deaf woman? tornado warnings. Yeah, for tornado warnings, there's sounds and all kinds of alarms, but how do I hear that? Nobody's known for sixteen years that I lived here and so what is anybody gonna do about that? And what does that do for me?
Yeah, I think, I think first and foremost, y'all can hear me, right? Still, okay, great. I think first and foremost, um, you are in the county, but I think we can, as our town staff, we can maybe work with the county and some of the emergency services like that to see what we can do, um, to get communication and things like that because you're right, it's unacceptable. A hundred percent, if we do about that, you should have the same equal, um, access to information, warnings, anything like that, that you absolutely need the same as anybody else. A hundred percent agree with that. Um, secondly, I think, you know, like we talked about here a couple times today, Anthony Open up with us and, and things like that. We have heard opinions that this process, you know, as we undertook it, you know, wasn't the correct way to do that. We understand that. We, once again, are only in the planning stages of this. There's nothing imminent that's going to happen, that's been decided upon at all, aside from just having this meeting and hearing feedback from the public and that's it. And so we probably could've gotten information out quicker. We probably could-
But imagine right now, me as a deaf woman, I was not informed of this information. Even with this meeting, I didn't have access to it.
Yeah. I understand that.
As we know, that with hearing people, they have access to information on a daily basis. So thank God that my neighbor told me about this meeting and I was able to come.
Yeah.
I'm able to talk. There are so many unknowns here.
Yeah.
I mean, I got no letter, no email, nothing. I don't appreciate that.
Yeah.
Again, I'm just saying.
No, I a hundred percent agree with you and understand that. I, I a hundred percent agree with you and understand that concern and I know at least one other person in town that is also of death too. And I'm interested to know what we do in town for that, to get information for those individuals and things like that. And I would like to figure out how we can, I, I don't have any information, I'm sorry right now. But I can promise you that we'll follow up on that and see what we do there. Um, I'm looking at Anthony Chick's head to see what we do there. So we can also on the outskirts of town get you necessary information that may affect you also. I apologize, we should've had the information to you.
And just one more thing that just came up to me. Um, I just wanna say this. I'm actually really concerned mostly about, um, the sheriffs, like, you know, in the old county. I don't know about here, but they had no idea about my deafness and how to communicate with deaf civilians.
Because we-
They need to be able to learn sign language, be able to communicate with people. Because recently I had this one, um, individual who was living with me for a while and he actually didn't know that I was deaf. He figured it out by communicating with me because we were, you know, flashing lights on a phone and he finally got my attention. But he had no idea that I was deaf. So it's very important that the sheriff's office knows how to communicate to any kind of person that lives in this county.
Yeah. I think, I think if we, no. Sorry. I think a few of us, um, here on the town and the county level can learn from this, to be completely honest with you. We do have mutual aid agreements with the county and so we need to be prepared just as much as they are. And so I would like to ask our town manager to work with our chief and maybe reach out to Jason Smith, the county sheriff, also to see what they have in place, um, so we can either mimic that or if nothing is in place for us to make sure that we satisfy that. And actually we take care of that, have a process for that together. Glad you did. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, everyone. So it is right at eight o'clock. And, if you can be real quick, come on, come on up.
My name's Phillip. Good with you all? You, if you don't know me, um, we live on, um, Black Level. We've been there a hundred and thirty-some years. We want to continue to be there. Um, twenty-eight acres, I'm surprised they didn't take the whole thing. The twenty-eight acres of our land is in the proposed, uh, boundary adjustment. Couple things, the numbers, number one, you said three hundred thousand dollars gross, two hundred net, a hundred dollars in immediate expenses. Hundred thousand dollars wouldn't cover the trash bill for one year for all the proposed area plan annex. And a sewer line from the town limits down to the airport with the pumping station would probably mean. So, whatever net gain you think you're going to get, it's not going, it's not going to come close. Um, just like most governments, they want to look at ways to bring in more income instead of look at ways that they can cut expenses. You know, maybe you should look at how you can cut expenses. I mean, you know, I understand, you know, y'all are big and making Main Street beautiful. To me, it's, it's nothing better than it was. I understand you got nice sidewalks and pretty Christmas lights, but I go downtown, I don't see anybody I know, there's nothing there for me to buy. Just to explain to y'all about agriculture, if you're a good farmer and you had a hundred, two hundred dollars an acre a year, you're doing all right. That twenty-eight acres on fifteen is in commercial industrial, if it goes into town limits. God knows what the taxes be on, county's got to assess it, over a half a million dollars, almost a million dollars. Are y'all going to offer, um, land use like the county does, because we're farming? You know, taxes would just make it land where we can't farm it, and then we have to sell it, okay? That should be our choice, that shouldn't be, we're going to be forced to sell it, because we can't afford to pay the taxes on it. And that gets me to the last point, you're going about this the wrong way. It should be, like, when the two subdivisions that are bordering town, this got built the last ten years, it should have been a conversation between the town and the county, and y'all will supply them water and sewer. That should have been bought into town limits then, and maybe had a discussion about what lands between that and town limits, maybe come into it. You know, I'm not a fool, I doubt we can stay there another hundred and thirty years. You know, we're going to be Northern Virginia one day. But it should be our choice, and if we decide to sell it, it should be, you know, the developer would go to the county, try to get whatever they're going to do approved, get with the, uh, town council, and then, then it would become part of the town, if so be it, you know? But that should be our choice, that shouldn't be forced upon us.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin, I appreciate your comments. And I really appreciate everything that everybody has said here tonight. Um, I took thirteen pages of notes, um, so I'm going to get them all typed up and get them to council, so they can review it. Uh, but hopefully they have a pretty good feel of the temperature of the room. And, uh, you know, you make, you make decisions appropriate. Uh, you know, again, I appreciate it, please drive safe as you go along, and, uh, we'll let you know when we notice another one.
Hi, my name is Jason Capel, I'm running for District One Supervisor. I'm here at the town meeting for the boundary adjustment. I've been to many, many public meetings like this, not sure I can say the same for my opponents. But my opinion is that, uh, the town should not annex property. They shouldn't force people in who don't want to be in. It's a pretty simple concept, and, uh, that's really it.